Okay, we're going to call this regular school board meeting of the Central Curry School District into order at 6 o'clock. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda item two is celebrations and presentations. Two point one is the summer school recap from Mackenzie.
Just thirty months, you do have the reading of the mission statement.
Oh, the mission statement, thank you. I'm sorry, Mackenzie. So, the missions, the mission of the Central Curry School District Number One in partnership with families and community is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of education excellence. Okay, now we can go on to celebrations.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Lee. I was hired to coordinate our summer school program for the school district this year. As many of you are aware, we had an influx of federal money to greatly expand our offerings for summer school. And this last year, we had 166 students participate. The most was in kindergarten, we had 33 of our incoming kindergarteners participated. And the number sort of decreased as you went up in grade. We had 24 in the middle school and 19th high school. We were able to offer both enrichment activities, which were sort of above and beyond the regular schools, as well as remediation to make up for some of that lost time due to the COVID closures. So, we had two week kindergarten readiness camps for incoming kindergartners. We had remediation in grades one through six to try to make up some of the learning gaps. And then we had lots of fun enrichment classes like yoga and gardening and swimming and biking and rockets, woodshop and ukulele, which those, you know, were the most popular by far. Waiting list on all of those. We also had, you know, great help from our busing. It was a huge, you know, logistical challenge to each week have a different bus route because we had different kids doing different camps and summer in the mornings, summer in the afternoons. So, that was a huge challenge, but, you know, big thank you to all the bus drivers who were making that work. We also had lots of students getting the free meals that were available during the summer as well, since we had a half hour long lunch there and we had, you know, 100 kids at school anyways, they bought them when we're getting lunches through that way. So, you know, it was hugely successful. You know, I think the community really appreciated that, all those extra offerings, especially after, you know, the last 18 months we've been through in terms of the schools not being able to do what we're normally used to doing. And then I guess the last bit was part of the challenge with having fewer high school kids enrolled is because we couldn't off, we could only do a high school class if we could offer credit. And so, a lot of those regular in-person classes would have been have to offer all summer long just around credit. So, we did have some kids earning credit using Edgenuity, our online learning platform, which was helpful for some students as well. And I think that's sort of the highlights. I don't know if there's questions or anything like that, or that's just it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Awesome job, thank you. Okay, two point two is a thank you to Darby Miller for organizing the Rotary Club and Gold Beach Barbecue for the back to school event. Thank you. Lord, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was a slacker and missed it. I think Scott and I were the only two people in the entire district that weren't there. So, I apologize on behalf of both of us.
Yeah, actually, just one comment on that. Big, big, big extra thanks to Gold Beach Barbecue because even though I know that there was a shortage of barbecue, they donated all of it. So, it was kind of a pretty big gift.
I just think it was a great way to start the year. It was nice. Okay, agenda item three is changes to the agenda. Mr. Miller, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, so there is something that I need to discuss with the board, some previous information that needs to be reported back to the board. And that needs to be under an ORS because it needs to go into the executive session. So, what we would do at number 12, where it says adjournment, number 12 will be executive session. Kayla, can you read out what the ORS is?
It's RS 192.6602F to consider records exempt by law from public instruction.
Yeah, so we'll go into executive session, she'll call upon that by that ORS, we'll break into executive session and then adjourn back into open session and then our final adjournment.
Did we want to add the grading scale discussion at the high school as an agenda item, or are we just going to cover it?
Is it something that you would want an approval of the board at an action?
We have to get an approval.
That's what I'm saying, is that something you want to let this current meeting? Yes. So, then we would have to add that under?
Does it change the course?
Yes, new business? It would be eight point three. Yep.
Okay, moving on to agenda, do we have to have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda changes proposed?
I move to approve the changes to the agenda as presented.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda item four is approval of the consent agenda, which is four point one, approval of the August 25, 2021 meeting minutes. It looks good to me, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda item five is citizen input for non-agenda items. Guests must state their name and address and there is a limit of three minutes. And we'll go by those who have filled out comment cards. So, Desiree, you're first.
Hello. Um, let's see, I'm not going to put my address. I live here, I think at least five of you, including my mom, know I was born and raised here. I want to express my concern.
Desiree, can you say your first name?
Oh, Desiree Yeager.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I want to express my concern about the mask mandates on our kids and the vaccine mandates on our teachers and staff, which I believe that the board is exempt from, if I'm not mistaken. I also want to talk about the fact that at the last meeting, I didn't speak, but I did speak to one of the staff members here after the meeting. And I specifically asked her if she felt that it was within her moral obligation to stand up for her coworkers who did not believe in the vaccine, did not want to participate in being subjected to the vaccine. And she told me that no, it wasn't her place and that she didn't care, basically. So, I want to point that out, that somebody in the school believes that. I also want to point out the fact that these masks are completely useless. They don't do anything. They don't protect us from a virus. I think probably everybody knows that on some level. Let's see, not only is it probably really confusing to my baby to not be able to see any of your faces right now, but all of the kids that are in school right now get to experience this and how is that for them? I know I don't like it. I bet a lot of you don't like it. But we're expecting our kids to just put their heads down and comply and be quiet? No, absolutely not. No. I'd be curious to know how many kids aren't going to school this year because of this. I'd be willing, I'd be willing to bet it's quite a few. I know my kid is personally not because of it. I want answers from people and I don't want this nonsense about, oh, we can't answer your questions. Baloney, not, not going to fly with me at all. I will be talking to you people more often and you will be seeing me, you'll be seeing my face, you'll be hearing my words. You're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to talk to the public about this and give us legitimate answers. This is not going to be my future or my kids' future. I refuse it. I won't be vaccinated. I also want to talk about the fact that the teachers who don't want to be vaccinated, who are being forced to do so and otherwise lose their livelihood, how far are we going to let this go? When are we going to stop it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, baby. Thanks, Desiree.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, Tiffany Harris, you are next. Please state your name and address and you're limited to three minutes.
My name is Tiffany Harris. I've already given the superintendent my address. I'm here today to discuss the Department of Education approving of CRT being taught in our schools. And in regards to the fact that my child had brought to my attention that there is GATE and CRT topics being pushed through the Oregon Battle of the Books Program, I was wondering if you guys are willing to remove that and complain to the board in regards to that and write up a list that would be more acceptable for our children. The other thing is, is I was wondering if they do end up implying the mandate on the children for the vaccine, if you guys were going to force that on the children and enforce that as well. And that's all I have to say. Do I get any answers or remarks to my comments?
I'll give you a little follow-up, just in the sense that I haven't seen any of the stuff you're talking about, Modi, and I don't believe it's been implemented here. So, we'll have a discussion with the superintendent about that.
Well, I know it has been implemented to the children. My son was the one that came home upset in regards to the topics that they were pushing into it because he is a very avid reader, as all my children are, and they normally participate in the Oregon Battle of the Books. And I understand that I was told that they do not have to read the books on the list, but it's being promoted upon all of our children and I think that that is unacceptable. And I just want to know if you guys will be willing to do something about that.
Well, let us gather some information. We're not, I'm not going to make, pass judgment or make a comment until I know what we're talking about, until I've seen it discussed. We'll follow up on that one.
Okay, so will you go, will it be directly in regards to that?
One of us will, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next on the list is Hannah Jennings. Please state your name and address and you're limited to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Hannah Jennings and I am at Montel, Bank Crystal River Road on the fricking side of the river, but we're still considered Gold Beach. And I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit more about the mask mandate and I gave, most of you guys should have gotten a cute little packet, I even color coded it. And first and foremost is the mask mandate has been put upon the kids and the staff, actually by a late Oregon state law that is ORS 339.288SS. And in that, it states that no restraint can be placed upon a child that restricts their breathing. Furthermore, it is, the kids' heart rates are going up. It's been monitored and recorded through multiple health channels and especially with kids that have previous heart conditions, it's actually putting them at greater risk. Now, my kid actually does have a heart condition as well. Thankfully, we found it very young when he developed pediatric migraine condition. But it's a huge threat to the kids and the paperwork that I provided you will also show that the stress and the strain does provide long-term heart risks. And so, it's not just us that's at stake, but the people of color, actually the risks are 20% higher. And especially if they get the comorbidities, especially if they get the vaccine, put them at about a 60% greater risk. And so, we are really putting the children of Oregon at risk and especially by not allowing them to stand up and by not giving them the risks and the benefits that are associated with wearing a medical device. Masks are a medical device. Most of the masks, especially disposable ones, have been recalled, about 70% that are in use right now, especially the blue ones. You can actually type in the number and then click recall in any Google search and it'll pull up a number of articles and FDA recalls on them. And by the way, even OSHA states that the regulations once, the previous regulations, it's the little orange tab here, show that any point longer than 15 minutes can harm the wearer, it doesn't matter what kind of mask that you're wearing. And by touching your mask and by having the kids touch their masks and rearrange them and move them around, the bacteria is actually being condensed and transferred to more students and it's actually becoming a lot deadlier. So, rather than contain a virus, we're actually spreading it. It's much more dangerous. And so, I'm asking the school to please cease and desist with the mask mandate temporarily until the examination can be done for the health and safety benefits of all students, especially the ones of color that are being most dramatically infected by the mask mandate.
Thank you.
Hannah, you weren't here last month, so I mean, I'll just kind of reiterate what I said. The argument on this and the vaccine mandates, even though they're, it's in Salem.
No, I understand.
And, you know, I just, I really understand what everybody's saying, but the argument is there. They've crafted these rules in such a way that the people that run these buildings get punished if they don't, punished by potentially losing their jobs.
Right, we're especially putting children of color at risk. So, it actually is showing, they're doing a Harvard study right now that's showing in our district.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I get it, but, yeah, the argument's in Salem, it's not here.
Well, we can actually start things here. And I know that there was a punish, somebody was punished in the.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. This is over. Laura, yours is on an agenda item, so I'm going to wait until that, that time for that. Okay, we're going to move on. So, district reports. Six point one is financial reports from.
Yeah, and Crystal was not able to make it to the meeting tonight. She did email out those financial reports to you.
Okay, yeah, we did see them. Does anybody have any comments on any of that? I do not either. Okay, six point two is principal reports. Ms. March, can you just move it if everyone wants to go first?
Mine's on top, so mine's the blue one. And what I'm most excited about this month for our school board meeting is that I think I've finished hiring people for this school year. So, that's very exciting. And I know that the last time that I spoke with you, we were looking at some reconfigurations due to the rising fourth grade numbers and fifth grade numbers, no more blend, which grade. The bad news is, is third grade's now sitting at my highest class of 26 students. So, I'd rather not get any more third graders if at all possible. But fourth and fifth grades are some nice, healthy classes with 17, 18 kids, which is a real sweet spot to have those kinds of numbers. And then I filled my IA position this week, so I'm really excited about that. And then, you know, we've got sped and breeding intervention are, have been doing all their testing and now they're taken off their services. And athletics has started and we had our vision screening and school pictures are coming and it's feeling like a traditional school here, which has everyone in a good mood, I think. I was also going to mention on the side about the U of O Teacher Wellness Project and the IRRE training, but I see that it's in Eric's superintendent report, but I'd just like to say that, I don't want to speak for Dana as well, but I know that as two new principals, I'm really excited about having the opportunity, the IRRE training will provide us in how we do conduct our teacher observations and provide feedback. It's going to be really useful for us, so I'm really excited about it. And then I, one last thing is, I'd like to give a shout out to tech, to our IT at, to Skry Electric, who have trained one of my instructional assistants to sweep the laptops and devices that were used during CDL so that they're striped clean for the next user. It saved us some money and I'm grateful that they were willing to do that. And Chrissy Adams has been, has been rethinking those. And so, my goal is to have a bank of those devices that we can check out. Heaven forbid, have to go move into CDL in a quick and swift manner. So, I'm really happy with tech. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Well, I have two things on my list. I just wanted to point out that most of you took probably pre-calculus or what we called math analysis in the day for college credit. And now, we are also offering college credit for calculus and they actually get free term calculus through OIT and that's how our pre-calculus is done too. Anyway, so that's pretty exciting that, you know, we're, our numbers are shrinking, but we're able to actually add a little more college class, so that's kind of nice. And that is being done because we have worked with Pacific and they are actually, we're actually using their math teacher and he is teaching class there, but sending it to us. And so, our kids are on with him live via tablet. So, anyway, that's, we have, we also have one other new class this term that I didn't know about, I think at our last meeting, and that is our science teacher is offering a genetics class. And again, it's probably one we consider a higher level science class. We are working on recruiting for all dead. We haven't managed to get anybody, but kind of ties into our attendance down below. We have actually sent out, to non-attending students that didn't come back this year, about 10 of those that sent out last week, just as a, you know, time to, you know, you need to do one or the other, either you start showing up or you're going to be dropped kind of thing, and we'll be following it through. Four of those that we know of supposedly are going to online programs or at home, but the other six, we have been contacting them and trying to get them to center off there. So, is that, we have a variety of scheduled games, some of them are changing. For example, our football game is for Friday, has already been canceled, so you can mark that off on your calendar. We also have, at the bottom, I wanted to point out, we have a, Red Cross is doing a blood drive. It's after the next meeting, but it's pretty close, so I just thought I would put that on there in case anybody wants to come and donate some blood. And we're going to be trying to push for textbook adoption this year in English, English and language arts. And I also wanted to mention that I, we have a digital arts lab and at the time we installed it, we only had funds for about 15, which is a pretty small class for us and it is full every year. And so, that is one of our goals this year is to try and enlarge that to 22 stations in there. So, that is good news for me.
Do we have an update on our science teacher being on?
The word was, he was supposed to have gotten his visa yesterday?
Yeah.
And that happened? Okay. So, I, now he's, has to do the embassy, the American Embassy, visit and do the process through there, but we're hoping soon. The problem is, we don't know how long any of these things take and I'm not sure anybody does, actually. So, it's just kind of one of these things.
Big learning curve.
Yes, it is. Yes. But he is getting a lot of experience on how to teach from a much longer distance.
Yeah, it might be the ultimate distance learning.
And I also want to, I want to take this opportunity to thank Laura Williams. She has been our substitute in there and has helped him immensely, feedback and helping grade papers and just really giving him a lot of help. And I know that that has been very key for our students.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have the superintendent report.
All right. So, with your enrollment update, what I will always have is I'll have the previous month and then I'll have the current month so that you can always have a, something to look at to compare it to. August, we had projected enrollment, so that was just all those cold calls and everything that we could do to try to figure out who was going to return. Our September would be our actual numbers that we had on that particular day that I was pulling the numbers, which was, what, last Friday? And that was prior to the 10-day drop. And so, there are going to be some less students on that list than what we currently have on here for our actuals because there will be some that need to be dropped because they have not been attending. It doesn't mean that we won't continue to work with them to try to determine what their enrollment status is and where to add, but it just means that because they haven't been attending for 10 days straight, then we have to drop them for our.
Is, am I, are you reading this wrong? It says fall 2020, is that actually 2011?
Well, mine is today. Thanks for correcting that. I got the date at the top for it.
What year is it?
Yeah, they all blend together. Then, Mrs. March already kind of talked about IRRE, but it's been a good opportunity to work with the administrative team together. I feel sorry for the poor gentleman from the other district that got stuck with our group of three because we were laughing and joking about all kinds of stuff, he was kind of looking at us like, where are these guys at? We were enjoying it and really liking the training that we received. So, it's been a good opportunity to not only work with the administrative staff to be able to help them, be able to evaluate staff, but also kind of a bonding type where we can work together and kind of see some different ways and different things that we see when we would potentially look at evaluating the classroom. So, it's been really, really effective. The next thing is teachers and instructional aides will continue to receive training from Dr. Mark Ryzen from the University of Oregon. It's a project for social emotional learning and trying to help the staff to better, not only help the students with their social and emotional status, but also the staff members as well. That training will continue this Friday. They'll have about an hour and a half worth of training this Friday on it. And then there'll be one more session after that. And then they'll get some feedback from, from our staff, they'll also get some feedback from some students as well that want to participate. They'll also get some feedback from some students as well that want to participate, give some feedback of how that has helped them or not helped them and the differences that they may see. So there's a classroom at Riley Creek, which was eighth grade, and then the ninth grade students at Holbeath High School. And so they're at two different schools, close to the same ages, so they can kind of compare that, how it may be different within the school environment or just actually the age environment and what may happen with those students. So it's a pretty neat project that we're, we're a part of. Next thing was just professional update. We now have, it was kind of a hard, hard process, but we finally have with Ann Curry County, myself, Brooke in Port Oxford, working together on the three superintendents with the OHA representative now. And we have biweekly meetings about how to manage COVID in our areas. We've seen a lot in some neighboring counties, especially that in Kuz county where they had to shut down schools. We've been looking at our numbers in Curry, luckily. I just got a report today, we've had very little within our old school environment. We've had one staff quarantine and because of that, that there was some small amount with student quarantine, but I mean, very, very little, nothing to really even say that we have any kind of an issue. So very small amount, we don't have to really worry about that at all. So thankfully, we haven't seen that within the school, haven't had any spread within the school. Hopefully that will continue. We've done a lot of precautions to make sure that that doesn't happen. I know they've been vigilant in both buildings to try to, try to help mitigate that as much as possible. So I'm thankful for our custodial staff for all the work that they do in helping that. And then our staff for calling along with the instructions that they receive. Let's, the next thing that is coming kind of down the line is I'm working with South Coast ESD. A lot of our superintendents in the region are of building an online network that would be ran by the South Coast ESD, similar to what Inner Mountain ESD is doing. They are the ones that would hire a teacher to overlook a grade level or maybe a couple of grade levels and oversee the online program of students. So our students would still remain our students, but if they wanted an online option, they could use that option. We would have to pay a portion of our ADM to them, but they would still remain our students. So any activities, anything that we would do, they would still participate in that. So that's kind of the work that's happening with South Coast ESD and with the school districts.
Is, is there a new director at South Coast ESD?
Yes. Her name is Charis. I don't remember her last name. I remember her first name because it's C-H-A-R-I-S, Charis. I can get that information to you later. The next thing on the back is we're working on getting the Wi-Fi in the high school music room, middle school music room, and over at the gym over at Riley Creek. So that's been something I've had a lot of requests for and I knew it was something that was really important to our staff and also to our students. We have that in the works now. The next thing is our tech committee has met and we talked a lot of some of the things that we needed to do to restructure some things that, especially Riley Creek, because we weren't able to get the bandwidth that we needed to in some of the classrooms. So there's a need to purchase some more access points to be able to allow for more students to be on at one time. If one classroom down, particularly the third or fifth grade hall, was using a classroom set of tablets, then the next classroom would not even be able to log on or both tried at the same time, then nobody'd get on. So we're clearing that up by adding some more access points. And then reconfiguring some of them that we do have to split between two classrooms instead of being in an area where only one classroom could really effectively access the bandwidth. Let's see. sidewalk installation is now begun. That will go up the hill by Riley Creek there. So that's been a major improvement. And I know everybody kind of watches that daily to watch our progress on it. It's pretty exciting that we're not going to have kids walking right on the side of the road for that length. So a great thing and very thankful to the city for being able to do that project for us. And then the, the next thing is we need to, get a work session put together if the work's going on, if the potential's going on. So I just wanted to put that on there to remind everybody that we need to do that. But a lot of our other stuff with those going on, but those are some of the main things that I wanted to add.
You missed your bullet point there about the reader board, too.
Oh, did I miss that? Well, you probably saw it. Yeah, so there's falling leaves and all kinds of stuff on it right now. So yeah, our, our staff, so Angela and Teresa have been having fun trying to learn, learn how to run the thing and putting up different messages. And, you know, it's, it's really good when you can drive by and you can see, oh, there's going to be a cross-country meet on this date or a board meeting. So it's been a, been a good thing. I'm glad we have that up and going finally. Teresa will figure out how to put up some fun stuff on it.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because he had mentioned that the numbers were down. I was just wondering like what the total numbers were down from the 2019 roster? Because we don't have that additional paperwork. That was just something that he had mentioned before you wrapped up.
I do not have 2019 roster, so that was prior to me, so I don't have that information. So I can't compare that.
What about 2020?
Oh, let me see. I, I know what, what I have from when I started.
Okay.
So I don't have that information.
I think it is.
You can, you can contact me at a later time.
Okay.
I think, I think what he said was it's down from what the projection was last month.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I.
I just didn't know if there was like, like exact numbers or if it was just projected to what was actual or.
Just what, what we thought and how many we thought we were going to start school year with versus how many actually should have.
Okay.
And that's normal for every year. We can do projections of them.
Do we have to schedule a work session in an open session?
Yes.
Do you guys want to talk about scheduling yet?
Yeah, I put it on.
I reminded us twice.
It was a really important thing. I put it on.
Okay, thanks. Yes, we do need to talk about that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mulgarn.
Yep.
Okay. Agenda item seven, it is old business. We do not have any agenda items for old business at this time. So agenda item eight, eight point one is the proclamation declaring October as bullying prevention month.
And Mr. Clay was not able to be here, so.
Oh, just missing me.
Yeah.
You did watch.
Suicide prevention was last month.
I think it's parlaying in bullying because suicide, but they're actually separate.
They are. They are separate.
Okay. Okay, does someone want to read this?
Yeah.
I read last month, so I was being really quiet.
Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation or harm intentionally directed at a person or a group of people and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, on the job, and through technology. And whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Oregon. And whereas research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence annually affecting hundreds of Curry County children and adolescents. And whereas 30% of Curry County eighth graders and 19.8% of eleventh graders experienced bullying in the 30 days before the 2019 Oregon Health Teen Survey. And 9.9% of eighth graders and 7.6% of eleventh graders did not go to school on one or more days because they felt they would be unsafe at school or on their way to or from school. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems and are at increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, interacting online, and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure or feel fearful and intimidated and helpless to stop it. Now therefore, be resolved that the Central Curry School District hereby proclaims the month of October 2021 as Bullying Prevention Month. Be it further resolved that all Curry County schools, students, parents, recreational programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for our children and adolescents.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, can I get a motion to proclaim October as Bullying Prevention Month? Make a motion that the month of October be declared Bullying Prevention Month.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay. Eight point two on the agenda is SIA Year End Report from 2020 and 2021.
Yeah, so to wrap up the SIA for 2020, 2021, I have to do a report to ODE determining what we use the SIA funds for and some of the purposes. And then some of the things they wanted to know is why didn't you do certain activities or what was your process through the things? The very, there's four questions that they asked. The first question is ask the clear impacts from the reduction of SIA funding and from direct efforts to respond to Code 19. I can't fully set those aside. What is important for the community, including focal student groups, families, and educators? From the information that I can gather, I, I tried gathering as much information as I could, but I had to go over old reports, just some information that I could find, is that I found that the student health and safety was the priority from the district. From everything that was on the list, that, that became the, the theme and the source of everything. So we had to prioritize what we would even do under student health and safety. The items were add full-time elementary counselor, which we did. The second was add a district nurse, which we have tried and we have been unsuccessful of being able to hire that position. The third was address family supports, which we did through both, the use of both counselors and adding supports of what can be done for, for our families. And then the last was address health and safety concerns with facility improvements, which we did by making the campus more secure at both Holbeath High School and Riley Creek by redoing a lot of the, the door fob system. Well, completely redoing the door fob system, putting new system in. And a lot of the doors that we had were malfunctioning. So this was able to shore up that and to make sure that we had locking doors and that we were able to provide a more safe, safe campus. So the, the next question was what barriers, impediments, or challenges of SIA implementation? Well, to me, it was obviously the barrier mostly was the lack of funding because we weren't able to, to do some of the things that we needed to do upon the priority list that you all had created through your community engagement, your discussions that you've had with staff and students. So that was a big barrier. Then the next barrier for what we really wanted to implement was the school nurse. And because we're not able to hire that school nurse, that became, had become a barrier. I'm still continuing to work with South Coast ESD on that, but it really does not look very promising. They've talked about trying to figure out some way within their own current staffing to send somebody for possibly one day a week, but it wouldn't even be the same nurse. It'll be rotating nurses and not even having somebody who knows our kids or being able to work with our kids upon a consistent basis, so.
You know what happens to the money?
Yeah.
Does it just?
We, we can re, put that in because it's over the biennium.
Oh, so we can roll it to the next.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have to update our plan if we're going to use it for something.
Correct. Yeah.
Now, where is that job categorized at?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't interrupt the meeting. I'm sorry.
And then number three was implementing, SIA implementation includes ongoing engagement with focal students, the family of focal students and educators. What successes and challenges, if any, have you experienced in maintaining engagement? Well, I said, did any impact of COVID? Opportunities to have ongoing community engagement was challenged, but through Zoom meetings, there was the opportunity to try to get more engagement that way. There was opportunities through staff meetings, through working with focal groups. So it seemed like it was a negative in some ways, but in other ways, through some Zoom meetings, there was opportunity for people to, to participate. At least that's the feedback I got from those who wasn't. You may, you all may know that a little bit better than I do, but for what I was told, that's, that's what, what I got from feedback. And the progress through the experience was also shared out during the support meetings. So I'll see what we do through Zoom meetings minutes and see what's up. And then number four is please share your professional assessment of what guided your choices to prioritizeization efforts in first-year SIA implementation. There's a few more things on that, but that kind of sums it up. I said by not being a member of the administration here last year, it's hard to sort out all the information leading to the choices and prioritization the district had for SIA implementation. But I do know that the counselor at Riley Creek has been an extremely impactful decision. Staff members have reported to me the positive impact counselor has had on student staff and community. And impressed by the work that has been shared with me about the accomplishments of having a school counselor for students at Riley Creek. The mental health of our students was drastically impacted by COVID over the last year. The support provided by the counselor has been. There was an optional question five. I omitted it because there was a lot of information that was really hard for me to answer because I didn't have all that information. There was a lot more of a spreadsheet that I had to fill out for, for this date, but this is the summation of that information. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any board questions, comments?
Did I get the information right?
Yep.
From whatever, everything I was able to gather?
Yep.
I think so. I think that the only thing that, that stands out to me is maybe not in here, and I don't know that it would need to be, but, but that there was kind of a balancing act of trying to figure out ways to spend the money that would not encumber the district in perpetuity, that would be a support and, or would be, or there was a logical sustainability piece already built into it.
Yeah.
So there was, there was sort of like, I think you nailed what the top priority was, but there were some sub-factors that helped rank things.
Yeah, and I did mention that about the area of things to determine. I could have looked for it. Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Okay, thank you, Mr. Milburn. Okay, we are going to move on to eight point three, which is about the new grading system. We'll have Ms. Houdal speak, and then we'll have the audience.
About, I think it was about four years ago, so you might have been around then. They, there was a contention on staff that wanted to try to increase the grading scale from a passing six sixty to up to a passing sixty-five. And it made all of the, I think it was several-pronged approach. At the time, they were also adding some of those college classes that they were going to be elevated to a five-point grading scale. We also added weight to pluses and minuses because we had, you know, we'd have this battle for valedictorians, and we'd get people that would be at a ninety-one versus people that were at ninety-eight or ninety-nine. And so they felt that that would maybe help make it a little more fair. So that was what they implemented at the time. It kind of was all encompassing. And I remember thinking as a staff member, I really don't want to do that, but I will give it a try. And so they said, well, we'll look at it again in a few years. And so we've looked at it. The people that wanted it are no longer with us. And there is not a single staff member that I have that would still change it this way. So I said I would bring it up. And so anyway, we would still like to maintain the pluses and minuses, the value of increased or decreased grade point average for those who felt like that was actually a good option. The five-point scale for college classes also, we felt like, for most college classes, I should say, also, we felt like was good. But we would like to change it back to a ten-point scale. In the current five, I don't know if you figured it out by now, but there's no easy way to divvy up five points between essentially four grades. So there was like lesser on some than others. It was like eight or seven, eight, eight, you know, anyways.
Yeah, it was like ninety-two, eighty-three.
Yes, it was very hard to keep track. So I had to like look it up every time. So anyway, I, so we, as a staff, we are proposing to change it back to a ten-point scale, keeping those other adjustments, but we need asking for approval.
Yeah, she, Mr. Newell, approved it with it. And I agree with her, and I do make the recommendation that we move to a ten-point scale.
I could also make one other comment in that is all the colleges around us also use a ten-point scale, as well as Riley Creek homeschoolers. So they were struggling as they came in, and then everything gets reshifted when they leave because they go out to swap for, you know, almost all the universities around us, and our students go to ten points, so.
Yeah, I think Scott and I were the only board members around when that happened. I, my only, I mean, you know, we agreed to it under the guise of if there's, you know, two or three students, you know, top-level students that we can give a leg up to to go someplace out of the area, you know, that was the real, that was the selling point for us. If we're not going to lose that, you know, if we're not going to be, you know, causing grief to those, talk to your kids academically by moving back the scale, I really don't necessarily have an issue with it.
Yeah, I don't think that that would have an adverse effect. Actually, grade point averages could be higher, and so that actually might actually.
Let's move to the public comment portion. Laura Williams, you can state your name and address, and then you have to.
Thanks for taking my comment card, really. So Laura Williams, nine three eight three oh, Little Town Drive, there in Gold Beach. I think as many, if not all of you know, I'm a retired teacher from Riley Creek, and I'm now back subbing. And as you know, as we've all said, I'm subbing in science. And I only recently became aware of what had happened with the grades. And so let me just jump to it. I'm totally in support of changing it. And I wanted to talk about it because I wanted to share with you. And I had a student come to me today, and she said, quote, "My grandma's really mad at me because I have a C in her class. And then I looked at it, and I have an eighty-two percent. I don't understand that. How come I don't have a B?" And so I think that's part of it. It's very confusing. It's demotivating. Parents get upset. The students feel avoidant about it. So I told her I promised I would look into it. So that's it. I just, I want to give my support for doing it.
Ms. Williams, sorry, excuse me. Do we have any board questions, comments? Can I get a follow-up?
I'll make a motion to change the grading system as proposed.
All those in favor? Aye. It was everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda item nine. Oh, we're supposed to do it as a whole Agenda item, not a first thing.
That's okay. You can do it on a, an individual item that you have to.
Okay.
To do a vote on. It is okay to do it though.
Okay, oh, I guess we're going to bring out it. Okay, Agenda item ten is individual board reports.
Oh, wait a minute.
What?
We're not doing that?
We already, this one is the only one.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So, yeah.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Okay. Okay, Andy, do you have anything?
Um, no. No, I don't.
Okay, Jeremy, do you have a board report?
No, but I'll just say congratulations to the soccer team.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you for the people who participated in the board meeting. We do listen, and I'm grateful that school is going so well. And it has to do with all the people that are behind the scenes, teachers and staff and parents, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll second. Thank you for the public participation. We really appreciate people coming and being interested in what's going on at the school, and we like to hear from you. And the report from my daughter is that she is so excited that school feels normal and it's good and it's going good. And it's going great, thank you. That's my report.
Agenda item eleven is key dates and calendar updates. Eleven point one is our next board meeting is scheduled for October 12th at 6:00 PM here in the library. And. What did I say? Sorry, sorry. October 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM here in the library. Eleven point two, we need to discuss having a work session for our board goals. And put something on the calendar.
Board goals and potential goals. I should put goals on there, too.
So the bond. Yeah, now we need to do the board goals, too. On the bond session, was it, is that something we need to do? Have Carol participate in like part two of?
Definitely would be definitely beneficial.
Okay, so it's not, yeah.
Our work session may or may not include that presentation, though. Might just be us talking about it.
Yeah, we can sneak that in maybe into the board meeting.
So if you could give me some potential dates, I could ask her. And then you can do a finalization date, and then we can publish it.
Okay, my schedule is usually open, but next Monday, I'm going on another fire assignment, but it's going to be a short one. Only be gone for like four days. But that puts most of next week out for me. But then after that, I don't have any conflict.
Yeah, I'm pretty much wide open with the exception of the 21st and 22nd of October.
Are we needing to do it by a certain time?
Yeah, sooner is probably better.
Is like is October 20th too late to do a session before the board meeting?
Well, Jeremy's not going to be up on that meeting.
I can do the October 20th board meeting virtually. I can't be here in person. And basically after that week, so that week, like the 19th. I'm not sure what day. The 20th is a Wednesday, so pretty much the 18th through the end of the month, I will be gone. But I can probably make my schedule work before the 18th of October for a special meeting if we really want.
I'm sure I can do it before then. I just didn't know if we wanted to combine it with the board meeting and cover later.
I don't know if you'd have enough time for board goals and also, I don't know, that was getting the bond to have prior to the board meeting.
Yeah, I think we need.
I would kind of like to be here in person for the work session.
But how's everybody feel about the first week of October somewhere?
That works for me.
That works.
Do you honor, does Wednesday's at six work for people generally? Should we do the sixth at 6:00 PM as a session?
Yes.
Is that going to do both, both things? Just a work session, not a bond?
Well, the bond is part of the work session. That's for board goals, yeah, and for bond. And so we'll put that as a tentative date, pencil it in. I will contact Carol Samuels to see if that is a date that will work for her. If I need to look at a different date, is that the same week?
Yeah, just one, one night sometime during that potential week?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it loops Scott into this.
Yeah.
We'll just hope he's available then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that gives us enough time to properly notice that.
Okay, Agenda item 12 is we're going to move into executive session, so we're going to have to dismiss our audience.
So you'll have to read that at the end of ORS.
Do we wait until?
Do you read to the audience, ORS?
Okay, we're going to move into executive session per ORS 192 dot six six zero to ask to consider records exempt by law from public inspection. Thank you all for being here.